This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, ready to go. Paul, are you ready?
Yes, ready to go.
Okay, Paul. So we have a forum tonight, Dan LaBalle, Paul Pragon, myself. Cindy, Almer is not available tonight. So I'll officially open the Wednesday, May 3rd Town of Southampton Planning Board meeting. It's on Zoom, as you all are here and know, and it's also being televised on Channel 191 cable network. First order of business is an A and R for College Highway Map 34, parcel 148. Submitted by O'Connor Land and Timber. I received the application and the check for $125. And the subject property is a parcel located southwestern College Highway, Route 10 and southeast of Brickyard Road in Southampton. And Ryan Gieler is representing the applicant tonight. And I do have a map I can share if I can pull this off. So let's see if I can do this. And then Ryan, I'll ask you to explain what we're going on here. I don't believe it. Okay. This is the map, Ryan. So you're on if you want to explain what we're trying to do here.
Okay, so Lot 1, like it says on there, it's approximately 10.7 acres. It's part of a larger parcel that I'm breaking out for a building lot. Its frontage is on College Highway. I think mathematically, Paul, there's enough frontage for three lots on all the frontage that's there. But I'm just looking to get a street number for, sorry, and if you're facing the lot from College Highway, it'd be the left side next to that group home that's there that would be the butter.
It's over, it's over here.
Yeah, I think that's 312 or 314.
Right, I looked it up today. Okay. But first of all, before we assign the number, this is the A and R you want approved, correct?
Correct.
All right, now, the lot in front here where my cursor is, that's already a house on there, correct?
Correct, that's existing house. That's Jeff Glaze's old house. I don't know who resides there now, but that's an existing, that's been there for probably 100 years, I think.
Okay, so on this lot here is the one you're creating and this is going to be your entire frontage you've got, or you look, so you're using both sides of this, correct?
Correct, I'm not, it's one, it's one big parcel, that's one big parcel, but I'm not using that northern side for any frontage purposes. It's just how it, the lots, how we configured it.
Over here?
Yeah, that's, that's not going to be any frontage.
So all your frontage remaining is going to be here?
Yeah.
And you claim you've got enough for what, three?
I could put two, two where your cursor is and one will fit to the north than that. It's 140 feet.
Over here?
Yeah, that, I mean, if you wanted to break it up, you could essentially break this up into three lots, but I'm, I'm breaking it up into one.
All right. Would the, is it eventually going to be other lots or you don't know right now?
Uh, I don't know. Trying to get this squared away so I, I can focus on getting some layout for a house.
Okay. Questions from the board, Dan or Paul?
So the house that's out there now, is the driveway access here or is that the one that's here? One or two, I guess.
No, the, over here where my cursor is, Paul, is where that Berkshire Omega is, where the group home is.
Right, but isn't there a house that's got a swimming pool too? That's not them?
Right here?
Which one's that?
No, that's, that's the next lot down. That's the Walunis.
Oh, Walunis is over here.
Yeah, that's him. What, he's got the swimming pool.
All right, so as you're heading toward Westfield, you got Walunis here. Here's the beginning of Ryan's property. There's a house, more Ryan's property, and then the group home.
Correct.
I was just trying to get myself situated.
Okay, got it. Dan, questions?
Simple enough, just clarify, we're, we're just asking to get one lot number assigned, right?
Right, because this, this remaining parcel, which is O'Connor Land, is, is something else. But we're just, all we're concentrating is on this, this section here that's being carved out.
Sure.
Questions?
I have no questions about it.
Any other, Paul?
No.
Okay, so for, for the A and R, I'll accept to entertain a motion on that before I go on an address assignment. So, motion?
I'd like to make a motion to endorse this A and R plan. As identified as Lot 1.
Dan?
Second, sir, I was trying to, minutes.
No, thank you, Tony. Motion's been made in second and any other further discussion? All in favor? Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Myself, aye, 300. Now, getting back to the address assignment. Ryan, when I looked on the assessor's map today, over here where my cursor is, they've got labeled as 300. And then this property here, which is occupied was, uh, before it was subdivided, that is, was 302, 304, 306. So the numbers over here, between here and the group home seem to be, does that sound right or am I screwed up here? Did the assessor?
I, I think in the middle, there's enough.
Yeah, I think it's 308, 308 and, and 308 to 312 is this portion over here. And all this, I'm sorry, I had, right, all this over here, including the homeowner, which according to the map, this one here is 306, already been assigned. So you either take like number 300 here or 308 to 3012 between here and the group home.
Is the group, is the group home 314?
It's gotta be because your, your property here has only got numbers up to 312.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know how that works, but the 312 is where it's going to stay tight to the group home. So I'm, I'm fine with that.
But if you subdivide this, we've got a, that's what I mean, you take the higher number because that'll give you numbers in between here.
And there.
You've got some, you've got some room. So you want to, you want to assign 312 to that?
Yes, please.
That's good. So we're going to assign 312 College Highway to that A and R person. We have a motion?
I'll make the motion as stated.
Motion's made by Dan, second by Paul. All in favor, Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I will say aye. So you're good to go. I'll send that over to the assessors, Ryan, and I'll sign these and you want me to drop them back to Town Hall or where else would you like?
Yeah, it's probably the easiest for you if you got the assessors. That's now, does the whole planning board have to sign that drawing or just you?
No, I have the authority to, to sign.
Okay.
We did that years ago because of this runaround with signatures. So I'll sign them. We're going to keep a copy. I'm going to give one to Building Department Conservation and the assessors and then the rest you get, plus the minor.
Okay, so I'll just, in your mailbox?
Actually, I'll probably leave them with Lucy. How's that?
That's perfect. Sounds good.
All right, good.
Thank you.
All right, Ryan, thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye bye.
See ya.
Well, I'm sharing so I don't screw this up. I think I'll go to this next. Because the next on our agenda is an A and R for 26 to 30 Montgomery Road, submitted by Darcy Gasparini. They have the application here. There's no money involved in this because they are not creating a new lot. They're just, looks like they're conveying some more land to an existing lot. So I believe Darcy is on hand here tonight. So I will ask her to give us a little explanation on this.
So my neighbor and I are, we're just cleaning up our lot between the two of us. I'm giving him a little frontage and he's giving me the backland. So we're just straightening out that side so we each have more squarer lots or rectangular.
All right, so if I'm looking at this right parcel, 2A is being cut off and conveyed to parcel 1, correct?
Correct.
And then this little piece down here where my cursor is, is going to be conveyed to parcel 2?
Correct.
Okay. Questions from the board? Paul, Dan?
No questions here.
No questions.
Okay. Seems straightforward. There's not a lot involved here. But I have a motion then that we allow the conveyance of property 30 Montgomery Road. Small piece to parcel 2 and a larger piece to parcel 2A.
I can make a motion to endorse the A and R at 30 Montgomery Road, as shown on the plans.
A second.
Motion made in second. And any other further discussion? All in favor? Paul?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, Darcy, um, you're all set. I'll sign these. And again, is it convenient for me then to drop these off at the Town Clerk's Office for pickup?
Yeah, I can just grab it from Lucy. That's, that's great. Thank you.
I'll sign them and get them over probably tomorrow, I hope. Of course, they're not open Friday, so probably early next week you can pick them up.
That's fine. I'm out of town until Friday anyway.
Okay, enjoy the sunshine down there.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, bye bye.
Bye bye. Well, let's see here. Next, we have a request for an address assignment, which I looked up today. It's on Pleasant Street. It's, all it's referred to is Map 29, parcel 59A. But it looks to me like number 11, without bringing up the assessor's map, because I've already looked at it, it looks like number 11 Pleasant will assign to it. Uh, they're getting ready for building permits and stuff and the board told them we'd like to have an address rather than a map number. For some reason or other, when it got divided up, how many, how long ago that was, I do not know. There was nothing assigned to it for a street address. So I'm going to assign number 11 Pleasant Street to that parcel. And it's from, the owner is Rebecca and Kevin Reed. They reside at 13 Pleasant Street. Uh, motion?
Paul, can you repeat the address again? I'm sorry, I missed the address. It was, what was the address?
The applicant's at 13 Pleasant, but I'm going to assign, judging by the assessor's map, number 11 Pleasant Street.
Okay. I like to make a motion to make that change at 11 Pleasant Street.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, last week when I was in the mailroom, I picked up a building permit that was left for us and it was a, yeah, building permit. And we had previously done a stormwater permit on it at 71 White Loaf Road for Christian Casa. A building permit had come in for that same parcel. So I signed off on it, knowing that we had already approved the stormwater. So once again, Christian Casa at 71 White Loaf Road, building permit. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion's been made by Dan, second by Paul. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Paul?
Paul, aye.
Dan? Aye. Myself, aye. Other than that, I don't have anything. I have just a reminder for you. And I'll be sending it out. I've already got the Zoom information. We have a residential stormwater hearing May 17th in two weeks for 81 Valley Road. And that's coming up. And hopefully you'll be able to attend because I don't know Cindy's status. I think she's still on board for that unless she has a previous commitment because the election isn't till the, I think the election's the 18th. So she should be, she should be good.
We'll make it work.
I'm sorry, Joy and there was a gentleman on here, Mark Scalice. Mark Scalice. Mark, is that Mark, Arnold?
Mark Anis?
Oh, Mark Anis from
Heritage Land.
Right, was that on Gasparini?
Yes.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, I was so engrossed in this, I got to put you guys on board. Uh, Joy, I'm sorry to you too. I never admitted you, but Darcy explained it, Mark. And it was very straightforward and it's been approved.
Okay, perfect.
I told Darcy I would sign these and drop them off at the Town Clerk's Office tomorrow afternoon sometime.
All right.
Late in the afternoon, but they'll be available the first of the week for you.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, Mark, sorry.
Have a wonderful night. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from either of you guys? But again, getting back to that stormwater, we need, they'll need you in case Cindy is not on. So I'd appreciate if you put it on your calendar, not knowing her status, so we could have a forum for that stormwater.
So it's May, May 17th, you have it in there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, 17th, yeah. I think, again, Cindy's tied up with her, I know her family's visiting from France. Whether they're still here by then, I don't know. And an interesting meeting today, just to fill you in, at Town Hall, it's there's a, let me see if I can get out of this sharing. It was called by Ed Gibson and one of our select board members. Has to do with the fire back in February that was on Maple Street that destroyed the home. And some concerned citizens came forward to the select board were very concerned about the events of that day and want to know what the town is going to do moving forward on how to prevent these type of situations or to minimize the impact they have. So they asked for all the town department heads to attend this. And there's going to be a forum at the Norris School on May 24th, I believe. And it's to discuss ways that each department going forward can kind of exacerbate what these catastrophic events, particularly fire, what, what we can do moving forward. And it has to do with the condition of roads. It has to do with the condition of fire equipment. It has to to do with, a lot to do with town water, which is, there's no hydrants, as we learned today. It was very interesting that the closest hydrant to that property up there was a mile away. And then on top of it, the driveway was like 900 feet long. So a myriad of issues that that try to want to get a head on and see what can be done in the future for maybe future building. And I guess the only thing from our standpoint that I could see, I'll certainly consult Richard Harris on it, but for instance, A and Rs, we just did two tonight. Now, these are on well-maintained and roads that have water mains on it and hydrants. So, you know, these, these are fine. I mean, I think I can only recall one and I don't, Paul can back me up. I don't even know if it was during the time you've been on the board, but I can only recall one instant many years ago where we, I think we rejected an A and R because of where it was located in a remote area of town. Narrow road, grapple road, whatever. So I laid out the criteria that we have for A and Rs, which mostly has to do with if it has emergency vehicle access. If it's kind of, I don't know, I have a different view of it personally because a private property owner say, well, jeez, I want to live out, I got a big piece of property. I want to live out in the woods. Want to be a hermit? Well, that's fine with me. It didn't, didn't matter to me. But on the same token, it's like, what kind of peril do you put yourself and your family in when you're you're living in circumstances like that that lacks town services for emergency vehicles? So I don't know how much we can regulate it, but listening to the fire chief, there is no mandate in our subdivision regulations for water cisterns. The only thing it says in our subdivision regulations is subject to the Town of Southampton Fire Code. But there is no mandate that requires subdivision to have one right now. There's nothing written in the regulations. So he, he would like to ask us to look into it to see whether it goes to general bylaws first and then we eventually write it into the subdivision regulations and also into your Fire Code. The other issue that came up was there's some communities that in rural areas, they have regulations in place for sprinklers in the houses. Go ahead.
This is a huge discussion matter that goes well beyond our capability where, look, this area of town has well water, right? I know that in this area of town, when there was a consideration for extension of, oh gosh, what was the name of that subdivision just up the street from, up on Crooked Ledge there?
Calle Grini?
Yeah, the Calle Grini development there, right? There was Quigley Road or whatever it was called, right?
Quigley Road, yes.
So they were looking to extend that and I know the fire chief was interested in making a condition for that subdivision extension to have a cistern or some, some underwater, underwater storage tank to provide an added reservoir in case of a fire in that area. The other thing is, you know, there's not much we can really regulate because we can't have, you know, the only regulation we can probably provide is if there's like, let's, let's just hypothetically speaking, and this is something that I think we would have to discuss with Richard Harris on, is let's say in that same area there was going to be a multi 100 unit development going in, right? And there were no town services, i.e. no water or for that matter, other utilities that we might have, which we don't. But let's just stick it with water. You know, if this, if such a development was, was feasible, the proponent would be responsible to extend the water main to that particular type of facility. It's like, it probably would be unfeasible to have, you know, 200 wells within a small area, right? Drawing all that water. So bottom line is, you know, there would have to be an extensive engineering study to, to, to make that happen and to, to say, well, how, how is this system going to work? Where I'm sure that grades up there are much higher than other parts of town, which
Yeah, you know, it's all in the early stages. It just was interesting because the town water people were, it was very fascinating and they're going to make a presentation at the meeting. But how many, how many areas in town that are above the elevation where they can pump water to? So there, there's a lot of different departments involved in it. I think ours is probably going to be the, we won't play as big a role as water and fire, but we may have to spearhead something when it comes to finding out how we can write some of the stuff into zoning eventually. But I just thought I would keep you abreast of it. Then it's it's going to be a public forum coming up. But that's down the road. Um, I don't have anything else.
May 24th, I believe.
Yeah, right. That's going to be at Norris.
Yes.
So the town warrant is out and published. I sent you all copies of what the warrant, some of the articles that we have on the zoning change for College Highway from industrial, the commercial is on there. And so are our zoning changes. Unfortunately, it's late into the program on town meetings, so I don't know how late that's going to run, but I would encourage you guys, if you can't attend, to do so. I had copied 200 sets of the summary sheet that Richard had we worked on showing the highlighting major changes that we made. So I went through that and Highlighting, uh, major changes that we made, so I went through that and, um. Made asterisks on the major changes, and then from there, I. Uh, pulled out the sections of the, uh, bylaw pertaining to that. Cause I wasn't gonna print a hundred and thirty-four page manual, um, for every person in town meeting, I had to. You should cut bait somewhere, so I picked that out, I think it's probably in the order, the table of use. The multifamily, the accessory apartments, anything that was major, I pulled out and, uh, sent to the printer, and I made two hundred copies, and hopefully. And I talked to Town Clerk, uh. People there that working the poles will probably hand out one per couple that comes in, and hopefully they'll stretch to have enough. So, um, it's there in black and white, what the changes are, and then Richard Harris, uh, will be, uh, in attendance with us that night to, uh, answer any. Difficult questions that may came, uh, come up of why we arrived at, uh, the changes we made, so. Other than that, I have nothing else for this evening, unless you've got any committee reports, Dan?
No, nothing to add.
Paul, anything from your end?
Uh, nothing.
All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn and hopefully we'll see you next Tuesday.
Like, make the motion to adjourn?
A second?
Motion made by Paul, second by Dan, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, guys, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Johnson, thank you for joining us, we, uh.
Thank you for letting me be a voyeur, um, I am very slow computer.
Yeah, it sounds like, uh, uh, your voice is at a crawl there. Thank you, Joy.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.